The Lord has been good towards me. And it's one of the most successful crusades to me in my life when compared to, I mean, I'm not comparing with the crusades in India, but my ministry in other countries, if I can see, it's one of the best crusades.
Hallelujah.
So I thank the dear Lord for his faithfulness and for his goodness. Shall we close our eyes? Loving Father, thank you again for enabling me to stand here.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, Lord, for you have a message to share with thy children. Thank you, my Father, today something good and great is going to happen, my Lord.
Yes.
Father, thank you, your name has to be glorified. Please let, allow your name to be glorified, my Lord. Please, Lord, let thy name be lifted up very high.
Yes.
Lord, we are here to glorify thy name.
Yes.
We are here to lift up thy name, my Father. We are made to lift up thy name, Jesus. I thank you, Father. If heavens declare thy glory, Father, we do not simply declare thy glory, but we experience and declare thy glory when compared to heavens, my Father. So we have lot of things that we have experienced in this world through the name of Jesus. So we are thankful to thee and we enjoy thy greatness, my Lord, thy love and everything of yours. Thank you, my Lord. We give you all the glory, highly speak with each and everyone here and let the name of Christ be glorified. The work of Holy Spirit will be accomplished in the life of everybody. My Father, we have to enter into another level of blessings, my Father. As I preach the word of God, let Christ's name be glorified. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Today I'm going to talk to you something from the life of Gideon. Because there was a promise from the Lord even before Gideon was born, even before Israel entered into Canaan. When Moses was on Mount Pisgah, through Moses, God prophesied that in the days to come, Israel will chase the enemy. If Israel, if the enemies of Israel come in one way against Israel, the enemies will have to run away seven ways. And Israel is going to inherit the promised land. But if you see, as against the promise of the Lord, as against the prophecy of the Lord through Moses, things were taking different turn when Gideon was to enter into the ministry. And the Lord again gave promise to Gideon. There was already promise given by the Lord through Moses. But again, the Lord gave the promise to Gideon. There are two kinds of promises. One is the promise given to the children of God. And many a time, God gives you a specific promise. So God gave promise to Israel that they would chase the enemy. And specifically, God gave a promise to Gideon that he would kill all the Midianites as one man kills just one man. But that would not happen. That was pending, that was remaining pending. In the lives of believers, many a time, it happens that promises are there, but promises are not fulfilled. Specific promises are there, but the promise is not fulfilled. We pray, pray and pray for the promise to be fulfilled, but the promise remains yet to be fulfilled. Why? Is there any mistake from our side? Must be so. Because there is no mistake from the side of the Lord. God is always faithful, God is always truthful, the word of God is infallible and the promise of God is infallible. But the only thing is, though the promise stands like that, we are unable to inherit the promise of the Lord. One day God spoke to Gideon. Let us see that promise. It is from the Book of Judges, chapter six, verse twenty-five. Book of Judges, chapter six, verse twenty-five.
Now it came to pass the same night, the Lord said to him, "Take your father's young bull, the second bull of seven years old, and tear down the altar of Baal that your father has, and cut down the wooden image that is beside it."
Praise the Lord. So God has a message today. Suppose everybody is facing the problem. The promise is there, but I'm not going to have the promise fulfilled. The blessing of the Lord is there, but I'm not inheriting the blessing or enjoying the blessing. Bible says, there is an altar that has to be broken. There is an altar and that altar has to be broken. Unless the altar is broken, the blessing will not be released. Promise is there. Right from the time of Moses, the promise was there. And the promise was specifically given to Gideon. But the promise, if it has to be fulfilled, there is something to be broken, the altar. So many times we be like believers continuously praying for the fulfillment of the promise. "Lord, I want this to be done. Father, I want this to be done." Sometimes we pray, sometimes we fast and pray, sometimes we pray all night. But very a time, people go through a kind of situation where the promises are not fulfilled. God told Gideon in the night, "Gideon, you have to do something. There is an altar and you have to break it down. There is an altar. As long as it is there, the promise of the Lord will not come into force. As long as the altar is there or the grave or image is there, the promise of the Lord will be remaining unfulfilled." So after giving the promise, God was looking at the altar to be destroyed. Let us go back to the story of Gideon. Let us see Judges, chapter six, verse four. Judges, chapter six, verse four.
And they encamped against them and destroyed the increase of the earth, till thou come unto Gaza and left no sustenance for Israel; neither sheep nor ox were asked.
Here we come across Midianites attacking or invading Israel. And after doing so, you know what they did? They began to kill the cattle, they began to destroy the fields of Israelites. That means Satan was dealing with the economy of Israel. Many times we think that Satan deals with the health of God's children. Satan brings sickness. Satan causes disturbance. Satan causes or brings disharmony. But Bible says Satan attacks even the economy of the children of God. Many people do not know that. If you see, in Bible, even the Holy Spirit did the same thing. When Samson was offended, Bible says, Samson took a decision to destroy Philistines. He took a decision that the fields of the Philistines should be destroyed. That's the reason why he caught three hundred foxes and we all know what happened then. So the Holy Spirit destroys the economy of the unbelievers. Whereas the unbelievers or the Satan comes to destroy the economy of the believers. Even Jesus did the same thing. When he entered into the land of Gethsemane, Bible says, towards the end of the miracle, Jesus commanded the legion, thousands of demons to go into the peaks. The unscriptural business was destroyed by Jesus of Nazareth. So there is a kind of department in heaven. There is also a kind of department in the kingdom of devil, particularly aiming at destroying the economy of God's children. Particularly aiming at destroying the economy of those who hate Christ. We must know that. If we do not know that, without our knowledge, our economy will be going into the hands of devil. Without our knowledge, the economy will be going into the hands of the enemy. Somebody will come and take away our blessings and it is devil behind. As now Iran has Hezbollah as the proxy. Devil has some people as his proxies and they came out, they come and destroy the economy of God's children. That's the reason why as we commit our children into God's hands, as we commit our family into God's hands, we have to commit our income, our resources, everything we have into the hands of God. Then only that will be protected by the Lord. Bible says, Midianite center destroyed the fields. We know agriculture is the major source of income of Israel even till today. Even till today. So when Midianites came, they destroyed the fields of the enemy, I mean the Israel. That is destroying the backbone of the economy of Israel. Praise the Lord. Let our eyes be open. We have to always be careful about it, our, uh, our economy. If you say, Judges, chapter six, verse twelve. Judges, chapter six, verse twelve.
And the angel of the Lord appeared unto him and said unto him, "The Lord is with thee, thou mighty man of valor."
Praise the Lord. Angel began to talk with Gideon. Why only with Gideon? I'm coming to that point after some time. And you know what the angel said? "O thou man of valor." How is it? Was he a man of valor? Or simply angel is trying to make this man popped up? The heavenly beings will not do that. Definitely Gideon must be a valorous man. Otherwise, the angel will not say like that. They are the angels of God and the God is God of truth. But unfortunately, Gideon, though a capable person of delivering God's children in the hands of Midian, though as called by the angel as a valorous man, he was suppressed with a feeling, with some kinds of feelings. There were some kinds of feelings always suppressing him. A man of capability, a man who was valorous, but still suppressed. You know what that feeling was? What happened to the miracles God performed in Egypt? What happened to the wonders God performed in Egypt? What happened to the God? Why is he remaining silent? And why God is keeping himself away from entering into our lives? So a kind of depression was there. Many times, God's children have what we call as the feelings of depression. Always, God's children should know that fear, depression and discouragement come from devil. Whenever you are afraid, remember, it's a thought put into your mind by devil. If you are discouraged, remember, it's a thought put into your mind by devil. If you are discouraged, it's a thought brought to you from devil. You know the reason why? Devil one day, some years, thousands or millions of years ago, devil one day tried to become God-like or to put his throne above the throne of God. That's what Bible says. But he was thoroughly discouraged, thrown out of heaven. Right from that time, devil discourages anybody whom he comes to. If devil comes to me, he will start discouraging me. "Oh, the promise is like that, things are like that." And devil uses thoughts, devil attacks the minds, devil attacks us through people. "Oh, this will not happen." You can simply ignore. You have lost the miracle, you have lost the blessing, the time is over, the season is over. Many times we think that the season for the miracle is over. This is our thinking only. Season for the miracle is never over. It will never, never, never be over. If you see the life of Abraham and Sarah, the season for the blessing was over because they were well stricken in age. Season for the blessing was over. But if you look from the standpoint of God, the season for the miracle is never over. It's always there. It's always there.
Hallelujah.
If you see, Jesus feeding the thousands of people. The disciples came and said, "It's already three days, people are hungry. No way to buy the food or prepare the food. So better we send them away because we are not able to provide. Better to send them away because it's not possible to provide." The season of receiving a miracle or blessing, they were not thinking about. Jesus said, "You say like that, make them seated," he said. "Make them seated in rows of fifty each and the, the Lord has a miracle in his mind." Now let us see Bible again, Judges, chapter six, verse thirteen. Judges, chapter six, verse thirteen.
And Gideon said unto him, "O my God, if the Lord be with us, why then is all this befallen us? And where be all these miracles which our fathers told us of?"
Praise the Lord.
Saying, "Did not the Lord bring us up from Egypt? But now the Lord hath forsaken us and delivered us into the hands of the Midianites."
This is what Gideon was saying. Discouraged, disappointed, but still inside his heart. From the bottom of his heart, he wants the power of God to be manifested. Seeking the power of God. That's very important. In the life of a believer, whatever the situation is, whatever the negative situations are, whatever the unfavorable winds are blowing in our lives, hitting us, hitting our family, hitting our business, whatsoever it is, we must know, we must remember that we have to seek the power of God. Seek the glory of God. God likes such persons. Because many a time, we cannot achieve what we want to achieve. I can say every time we are a failure. But that's not important. We may be a failure, but the most important thing is that we have to seek the interference of God. Seek the power of God. Then the miracle happen. God is after those who seek his power. That's why God sent his angel to talk with Gideon. Because in the land of Israel, there was one man seeking the power of God. God is after such persons. We should never be discouraged, we should never be disappointed. Let us see the next verse, Judges, chapter six, verse fourteen.
And the Lord looked upon him and said, "Go in this thy might, and thou shalt save Israel from the hand of the Midianites; have not I sent thee?"
You know what God said? "You shall save Israel from the hands of Midianites." What a beautiful thing. "You shall save." God is using a disappointed man. We think that we are not capable of doing that. We think that we, our capacity is less, we think our power is less, we think our spirituality is less. No, not at all. God is saying, "O Gideon, you shall deliver them from the hands of Midian." Why not you today? Anybody can put himself or herself in the place of Gideon, anybody can put. And it is you who can deliver. God is talking about something impossible. You have to know that God wants you to be used to deliver Australia from the hands of devil, probably from sin, different kinds of sin. God wants you. Simply God is saying, "You shall save," that's all. Just one man, just one man, is it possible? Is it possible? But God says, "You shall save." Better we always look at God's capacity and not our capacity. Better we look at God's power and not our power. Hallelujah. I want to quote a miracle that happened in my ministry. Long time ago, in the year nineteen eighty-two, a group of people visited my place, Kadapa. My place is Kadapa, a small town or city in India. Probably forty or fifty people from Australia came and the speaker was Danny Mill from Australia. I don't know whether he's alive or not. So the person who brought Danny Mill to India came to me and said, "Sir, you have to organize the meeting." I said, "It's okay, I'll organize the meeting." Probably at the time I was twenty-five-year-old like that. I was so happy to organize the healing crusade, thousands of people came. But I wanted to interpret the message of the speaker, Danny Mill. The person who brought Danny Mill told me, "Pastor, I want to tell you one thing. You must be aware of that fact. Because you being young and you being convener, you want to interpret the messages of this mighty man of God, but it's not possible to interpret his messages because his accent is very difficult to catch." Suppose you do not do well on the stage. See, he was a man having beard and he's like Elisha. He will simply shout at you and you have to simply leave the stage when thousands are before you. Better, I bring some other person. Then I said, "No, I will do the interpretation." He requested me. I said, "No, I'm going to do the interpretation." Finally, he said, "Okay." Then that night I went, because I never believe in my capacity. Right from the time I was born again, I never believe in my capacity. I never believe in my, what to say, qualification whatsoever it is. So that night I went into my room, felt prostrate in the presence of the Lord. Just I felt prostrate and I began to cry, "Lord, I do not know anything. I do not know anything. I wanted to do the interpretation, but it's not, I know it's not possible with me. But I know it's possible with you, you be capacity." Like that, I prayed for so much of time. The next day came, the meeting started, the choir was singing songs. After that, that person, Danny Mill, came and stood there. I stood here. Danny Mill said, "Hallelujah." I said, "Hallelujah." He said, "Praise the Lord." I said, "Praise the Lord," because I was interpreting. First sentence I understood, second sentence I understood, the third sentence I could not understand. I couldn't understand his accent, the accent of Danny Mill. When he said the third sentence, I just closed my eyes and said, "Lord, where are you?" You know what happened? The greatest miracle happened. I saw a man with white apparel, dress, standing between both of us. He looked at me, all in a split second, that's all. He looked at me and said, "Now you start," he said. That's all. So Danny Mill was there, I was here, that person was there and everything, it was coming into my mind, what all he was saying. One hour was over. Praise the Lord, a great miracle. The second day, the third day and the fourth day. Fourth day after the meeting was over, Danny Mill came and hugged me and said, "This is the fourth time I'm coming to India, but I never come across a man like you interpreting so beautifully and so fluently." Hallelujah. God said, "Gideon, you can save. Gideon, you can save Israel." This is what the Lord is telling. The miracle is in your hands. Hallelujah. The miracle is right before your eyes. When Israel was crying, "Lord, there's no water to drink, there is no water to drink." And Moses too was agreeing with the Lord, where to get water? Then God the Father said, "The miracle is right before your eyes. See, there is that rock. That rock is there. You are not noticing that rock, you are not identifying who that rock is. See that rock and approach the rock, the miracle will happen." In our lives too, the miracle is right before, always you have to know the miracle is right before our eyes. It's not away somewhere anywhere. It's not hidden, it's not running away from us. You need not run to catch that miracle. No, it's right before your eyes and with faith we can know Bible says. Hallelujah. Now let us see, Judges, chapter six, verse fifteen.
And he said unto him, "O my Lord, where shall I save Israel? Behold, my family is poor and Baraseh, and I am the least of my father's house."
Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. That's what Gideon was. What he said is correct. Because he belongs to a tribe, Manasseh, and his family happens to be the least in the household of his, what to say, the, what to say, the father of the tribe, I do not know what it is. But Bible says, no, when Gideon was talking about his inability, God was talking about his ability. Gideon was talking about his, what to say, the weak part of his life, the weakness, whatever it is, God was talking about his strength. So let us shun our weakness, let us shun our informative, whatever it is, and catch the word of God because the word says, "You are valorous. O thou mighty man, you are valorous. You can save Israel from Midianites." Always turn to what God says, shun what your mind says. Say no to what your mind says, accept what the Holy Spirit says. Then only the miracle happens. The wonder happens when you agree with the word of God, with the promise of the Lord. I always quote one thing, one miracle that happened in my ministry. Once I happened to go to Sri Kalahasti. All Indians know what Kalahasti is. A famous pilgrimage center which is very close to Thirupati. I conducted meetings, mighty, mighty, mighty healings took place. Till midnight, three o'clock, I was praying for people, thousands of people came. Even those who were brought on carts. They received the miracle and they jumped out and they began to run like that. So many miracles. So at three o'clock, I had to start my native place. At the time I was doing my job as a lecturer. So the moment, the time I came to Kadapa, it was morning five o'clock. I was so tired. For six hours I've been standing, praying, preaching like that. So much of pain in my legs and I was feeling sleepy. The moment I came down, I mean came out of my vehicle, morning at five o'clock, just in front of my house, a lady was sitting, holding a baby in her hand. And that lady was crying, the child also was crying. When I looked at that lady, my God, for some hours I've been standing. I feel like sleeping, but again there are people waiting for me. Suddenly that lady came, approached me and said, "Pastor, for the last three days, my little daughter was not sleeping at all. I took that little girl to doctors. Doctors gave different kinds of medicines, but no sleep at all, no sleep at all. Nobody is able to understand what the problem is. So I brought this girl to you." I began to think, "Lord, somebody has to pray for me, I'm very tired. Now how can I pray for this girl? I'm very tired." When I was thinking like that, suddenly a thought, a rema flashed before my eyes. No need of pray, just lay your hands. Because Bible says, "If you lay your hands on the sick, they shall recover." Because God knew my weakness, I was very much tired. But Bible says, "Just agree with the word, the miracle will happen." So I approached the child. I just looked at the word of God in faith, laid my hands on the little child. "Lord, before you and in the presence of the word of God, in accordance to the word of God, I lay my hands on the little child and let this child be blessed with snoring sleep." That's all. When I removed my hands on the child, the child began to sleep, snore really. And I went into my room. The next morning at seven o'clock she came, the mother came and the child was still sleeping. Morning five, yesterday she started sleeping. Next morning, seven, that means more than twenty-six hours. Twenty-six hours, non-stop snoring sleep. The child didn't even get up for milk. Why? The miracle is not in my hands. The healing power is not in my hands, but agreeing with the word. First I said, "Lord, I can't pray." First I said, "Lord, I can't lay my hand." First I said, "Lord, I'm tired. Somebody has to pray for me now. When I'm so tired, how can I pray? Talking about my ability or disability." But when I agreed with the word, the miracle happened. Gideon also began to say, "Lord, who am I? My tribe is Manasseh and my household is of low status. How can I be your instrument? How can I be instrument? God doesn't want us to identify with the weakness of our thinking, but God wants us to identify with the word of God. Then the miracle happens." If you see in Bible, no, Judges, chapter six, verse twenty-five. I'm coming to the closure of the message.
Now it came to pass the same night that the Lord said to him, "Take your father's young bull, the second, the young, young bull, the second bull of seven years old and tear down the altar of Baal that your father has and cut down the wooden image that is beside it."
See the beautiful knowledge of God. God told Gideon, "Take the second bull." Suppose there are five bulls, God knows which one is the first, which one is the second. If he is so particular capable of knowing, suppose, I ask the dear brother, "When did you buy the duck in your house?" You may be confused, but God will say this puppy was brought on that day, in that particular year. God knows everything. Now God began to tell Gideon, "Gideon, you have so many bulls, no bullocks? The second one is there." God knows everything, everything and everything in our family. Praise the Lord. And God said, "Break that altar which your father has built on." Father was a great sinner because he built an altar for Baal. But son was after the power of God. Gideon was after the power of God. That's the reason why God appeared to Gideon. God didn't shun the whole family because of the father. Father was a worshipper of Baal, but son, Gideon, was a man seeking the power of God. See how loving our God is. See how kind our God is. But God said, "Gideon, you have a promise that you would save Israel." Gideon, there's a promise given through Moses some thousands of years ago that your enemies will run away. But if the promise has to be fulfilled, some objection is there. Identify your altar, I said.